Alright, we want to welcome everybody. Uh, school board needs to address the committee's meeting.
School district, it's Monday, June 11th.
Until it's summer, everybody's in a good mood and casual and having a great day. So, awes- awesome, and welcome to all of you here. Um, with that, we call the meeting to order. Would somebody like to read the approval of the revised agenda?
I move that the revised agenda, Monday, June the 11th, 2018, Board of Education meeting, be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye.
Uh, next, we'll turn it over to Dr. Buck for the superintendent's report.
Great, thanks President Laberty. We have a variety of good news pieces here this evening. So, students at Garfield and Taylor Elementary Schools were the lucky recipients of summer vacation kits donated by United Healthcare Community Plan of Iowa before classes dismissed for the summer. The kits included a wide range of items to help students remain active, engaged, and healthy during the summer months, including athletic balls, books, sunscreen, water bottles, bug spray, kids' activity games, and more. So, thanks to United Healthcare, we hope those kiddos have already gotten a chance to use some of those supplies to stay active and healthy in the first week of summer break. And I gotta tell you, when I saw that bug spray, I don't know about you, but the gnats, oh my gosh, they've been brutal this spring, so, they seem to find me, uh, which my wife appreciates. So, uh, the Building Trades Students and Families participated in an end-of-the-year celebration on May 22nd. This followed the completion of the 2017-18 student-built house, which is located at 1707 Bobcat Drive Northwest. The Building Trades Program is one of many examples of the unique opportunities available to our students in the district as they explore passions and interests that could lead to a fulfilling profession. At the same time, skills are developed that students can employ throughout adulthood regardless of their profession. Our social media coverage of Dave Smith and the program earlier this year received a large number of positive comments, with many community members recalling with great fondness the skills they learned and which they continue to apply as homeowners. Congratulations to Dave on his many decades of success, as well as his retirement this year. Uh, some of you may already be aware of this news, but it's certainly still worth sharing again. We are recently spotlighted by the Iowa Department of Education for the work underway to improve literacy rates through our participation in Propel. Johnson and Taylor Elementary Schools have seen students making noteworthy progress. For instance, we're seeing students making four- and five-word gains per week in these buildings, and the average is about 1.5 words per week, using Propel strategies. So, thank you to everyone involved in the implementation of Propel strategies and for our efforts to improve, uh, literacy rates. Students, families, and volunteers at Jackson Elementary School raised nearly $5,000 in quarters this spring for takeaway hunger. Throughout the fundraising period, the students learned about food insecurity and needs of the hungry around the world. Students then spent part of the day on May 29th packaging over 18,000 meals that would be sent out to those in need. Uh, it's a wonderful opportunity for the Jackson community to work together to improve the lives of others. And then finally, we recently received word that the Mentors in Violence Prevention Team at Kennedy High School has been selected to receive the 2018 Iowa Character Award for Student-Team Organizations of Character. This is awarded by the Ray Center at Drake University, which annually recognizes Iowans who show the six pillars of character counts: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and good citizenship. The MVP Program is one of several initiatives adopted by our district, which supports our work with the Community Safe, Equitable, and Thriving Communities Task Force, and specifically the objective to reduce bullying and violence within the student population. So, kudos goes out to Kennedy for their work on the MVP Program.
Great news.
Yeah, lots of good stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Are there any, uh, board reports tonight? Any board comments? No? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to communications, delegations, and petitions, and we have one request to speak before us tonight, so, Mr. Winklowski, welcome. Good to have you here, and I know that you, uh, know the drill, so...
Yeah, Lawrence Winklowski, 4234 in Merrell Road, or Cedar Rapids. First question I have for you is, how do teachers tell when students are on their cellphone? Well, why else would anybody be looking at their crotch and smirking? Sorry, that was a joke, just hurt audience. Okay, um, I wanna, you know, over the years, I've been on, um, committees, and I wanna thank, uh, thank, uh, thank you for letting me be on those, and hopefully I have more opportunities in the future to be on those. Um, you know, there's a sum, an assumption that we know the people within our community that, or that, you know, we know what they do, um, and what they've done and their history, and that's not always true. Uh, you know, for instance, I come here and I make recommendations, or sometimes people consider it criticism, and, you know, this is the same thing I do, not just here. I call up the city if I see some, uh, an issue. I, I do this in Hy-Vee, I did this where I did, used to live, um, and I know, most of you probably don't remember this, but I think Mary Ellen do, would, would, is that the, uh, Viola Gibson Sidewalk Infill Project, that I pushed through, I mean, I, I don't really live by, but we got all those sidewalks put in, uh, for all those vacant lots, so the kids could walk on the sidewalk and didn't have to go in the street. And that, that was one person who did that. Um, the reason I, I bring, um, bring this up, it, it has to do with the, you know, these committees that I've been on the last two, uh, the, uh, CYAC and the, uh, uh, Community Master Plan, you know, to me, that what they mean is change. And I don't mean what I'm gonna say with any disrespect, but, you know, I don't believe this school board, the administration, faculty, and staff, and even the community, is ready for every student future-ready. And I don't know if it's a situation of a mindset, a cultural thing, but let me give you part of an example, uh, something that recently happened to me, but this happened, uh, has happened with probably everyone, I've had this with most of the people in this room, and it probably happens hundreds, if not thousands, of times to others throughout the school year. Kennedy High School typically has, uh, for prom, they have this parade, uh, grand march where everyone gets to show off all the nice dresses their mothers made for them, and, you know, it's typically held in the auditorium. Well, this year, because of, uh, elementary school activity, it couldn't be. And so, I raised the question, you know, just, you know, what happened? And, you know, eventually, it got around to that, well, yeah, Larry asked this question, and, uh, well, not enough people have complained about this, or raised the concern, not enough students have raised a concern. And then furthermore, it gets into that, well, you really don't understand everything that's involved to change the venue, or, um, we've always done things this way, and then if it involves a person, you know, if you're talking about a teacher, that, it's like, oh, this person is a great person, all the great things they've done, and that, well, needless to say, uh, I don't, uh, this has to change. And that, and I didn't realize I used so much time, but, um, we can't accept those answers. It's not acceptable. And so, I got a challenge for everybody here. And that is, if anyone goes ahead and says that we've always done it this way, there's not enough complaints about it, to challenge that. Because if we don't, you know, that's what change is about, is changing things. It's not about doing the status quo. And so, that is my challenge to everyone in this room, 'cause if you just wanna be every student future-ready, you have to accept change, and you have to be able to acknowledge change, and you have to be willing to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winklowski. We appreciate your comments. Alright. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There any items in the consent agenda that board members would like to pull for questions or comments? Gary?
Um, I have a couple, um, with some questions. First one is BA 18374. It has to do with the purchase of the portable for Van Buren.
Okay.
And the other one is BA 18380, which is the, the contract with Grantwood Area, AEA for, uh, the subsystem.
Okay. You wanna take the first one on the portable?
Sure. Uh, my question is, um, as I was looking through the materials, is the cost of hooking up, I assume there'll be water to the, to the portable, is there, is a cost of, uh, hooking up the portable, is that part of the purchase agreement, or, uh, is that going to be something that's, um, assumed by the district?
Uh, Gary, I'm standing in for John Galbraith tonight from Buildings and Grounds. Um, I don't have the exact information on that, but I will let him, uh, I'll contact him, he'll be back in tomorrow, and I can have him reach out to you on that.
Sure.
I can, I can also add a little color to that, too, as well. I think that we, we purchased a used portable building, there were two vendors that we looked for used portable buildings for, uh, and we found a very, I, I believe John used the words gently-used portable building, that was in the $54,000-$55,000 range, which includes all of the setup onsite. There will be, uh, water and sewer, and two classrooms, both classrooms, at this, uh, new, uh, not new, but new to Van Buren, portable building to provide space for a growing enrollment there. So, hopefully that answers your question.
It does, and, and the rea, only reason I bring it up is, I think I, if I, my memory is correct, that, I think it was at Pierce, when we moved, uh, a portable there.
Yes.
One of the things that we found was the cost of connecting the water was almost as expensive or more of the actual building itself.
We expect that we will be less than $100,000 easily, when everything is said and done with this portable. And, uh, it, when we look at all the factors, this is the, the best option for the district to move forward with a portable there.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is actually one, this is actually one that I was gonna have a question about, too, so, thanks, Gary. So, what I was kinda wondering, and I don't know if it was even a question for John, was what type of programming would be in there? Do we know that, or is it just additional space that'll be there? Since it's, you know, a building that is going to be there for a while, is it just whatever's needed? Would anybody have that answer?
Honestly, I don't know, and we certainly can get back to you, to you on that.
Yeah, so, so Val would have that answer. It's classroom space, so, it's either gonna be either grade-level classroom or specialist classrooms, and I, I don't know that a final decision has been made, other than we recognize we need the space, and so, uh, but I don't know if it's, there was conversation at one time that it might be specialist classrooms, like music, um, there's also been conversation it might be a grade-level classroom, so, but we can get that detailed to you.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments on that? Alright, and then Gary, you had a question about the sub?
About the, uh, the sub-agreement, as I look through it, does that, um, I'm not seeing, does that, does that pertain to what we pay subs? That's, it's an agreement to have Grantwood, uh, continue with their relationship with, with, uh, the actual venting of the subs and the, and the teachers and, uh, and the placement, but, uh, is that also, are we bound to, or is there a set cost for the, the payment of the subs? I know that's been an issue in the last year or so.
Yeah, great question. Uh, so, the way that the sub-central contract works for us today is that we have, we're part of a consortium, so, there's a number of, of schools and districts that are involved in that, and each year, their rate is set as, as part of that program. So, there was a slight rate increase for this year. I think, I don't have the documents in front of me, but I believe it was like 25 cents, so, a, a very small increase as well.
So, that, everyone participating in that program, the other metro schools, it's a, it's a flat, a standard rate that everybody?
Correct, yep, flat rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I guess, just to maybe as a follow-up, could we, or would we break the, could we pay them more, or is, are we bound by the consortium to, to, to that amount?
So, that's an interesting question, that, um, we might be able to have some further dialogue around. Uh, we did talk this, uh, session, that there may be need for Cedar Rapids to do something a little bit different, and what might that look like? Um, and so, we did begin those conversations. So, I think that, um, that's kind of where we're headed, is, is there something unique or something different that we need to think about in Cedar Rapids? So, maybe we would have, um, say, a tiered approach, or something different than just that flat rate. So, it's a possibility.
We're still working with that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions or comments from the consent agenda? If not, uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as put forth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And this is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo? President Laberty?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to administration and our internal control, control review and audit committee reports, and Steve Graham, I'll turn it over to you for one of the last times.
One of the last times?
I won't be here at the next meeting, so...
Oh, John.
You know?
My gosh.
Anyway, yeah.
Well, President Laberty, Board of Education, Dr. Buck, it's a pleasure to introduce, uh, Josh Cutler with RSM, who's gonna come up, and while he's making his way up to the podium, that's kinda like a, a clue in here, I wanna also introduce members of the Audit Committee who are here present today to deliver what will be, after Josh's report, an annual audit from the Audit Committee. So, we have our, we have our chairperson, Gary Becker here, and who is just re-upped for another, uh, year of being a chairperson with the Audit Committee. And our longest-standing member right now would be Tom Hoffman, uh, who's a, who's an esteemed member of our Audit Committee, and next to him, to his right, is Gordon Epping, and then behind Gordon is Maureen Oviette, and then next to Maureen is Matthew Waltz. So, welcome, members of the Audit Committee, and I'm sure they'll be taking their, uh, place at the podium when, uh, the report from RSM is concluded. So, welcome, and I'm going to let you take it away, Josh.
Thank you very much. So, we have been engaged to RSM US LLP to, uh, review the cash disbursements and cash receipts processes here at the district. Um, we completed those procedures last month and presented a report to the Audit Committee. Within that report included several procedures that we performed, um, as part of our procedures performed, and, uh, we did list a few minor exceptions. So, when you were looking at the controls that were implemented over the last several years here at the district, um, those controls were, for the most part, in place and operating effectively. We did find some minor exceptions to that, which were detailed in the report, mostly at the elementary school level. So, if you think about, uh, overall risk, and you're looking at the risk profile of the district, uh, a majority of the cash is not, uh, being processed at the elementary school level, it's more at the middle school and high school level. Um, so, we felt that those items that we identified were actually low-risk, or moderate-risk for the district as a whole, and we talked about other mitigating procedures, um, and controls that were in place and operating effectively that would mitigate that risk to the district overall. Um, if there's any questions on that report, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
So, so, in terms of the elementary schools, is there additional training? I know, you know, since being on the board, we've, we've talked about annual training and reminders, um, is there anything more that we, as a board, need to make sure is being followed through on in terms of those elementary schools?
So, I do know that in our discussions with the Audit Committee, um, if you wanna discuss this, but in our discussions with the Audit Committee, that there was gonna be additional, um, training that would be provided to the secretaries at each of the individual elementary schools.
Sherry Leskey is here, and she can speak very well regarding this issue.
Hi, Sherry, welcome.
Hi, thank you, thank you. There is training that is offered to the secretaries annually at an August back-to-school training, so, we will be sure and touch on this topic again, and emphasize the procedures that need to be done, as well as, I won't wait till August, I'll reach out to the elementary secretaries now, and ask that they complete the, there were only a couple procedures that weren't being followed, and ask that they complete those immediately.
Okay.
I have a quick question. So, if someone's not available for your August training, so, there's a personnel change, or, or whatever the case may be, is there training throughout the year for any new personnel?
Yes, there is, absolutely. Any of the new secretaries or bookkeepers that began, there's training, um, on software, there's software for secondaries called KEV, which is different than the districts, and there's training that goes into that, and elementaries as well, because they track their consumable material fees. There's a cash management procedure training that is held, and every new employee now attends, who touches cash, attends that training. Any new employee watches a video that talks about cash handling. In addition, every year, there's a video, a follow-up video, so, there's re-training, and those are kept track of, to see that everyone watches them. And if someone were to miss the August training, um, we will go out and do special training and catch up with that as well. We do keep attendance records to see that everyone has been given this information.
And so, just to repeat, you have annual training for all employees that do finances in the district or handle cash?
That is correct. That would be our, yes.
Great.
One additional question with that, I just know at the, at the university where I work, we go through cash handle, cash handling training and some of the fiduciary responsibilities, and then we have to sign a document that says we understand, and that there's repercussions if we don't. Is there any sort of document that the staff sign off on that they're, why this is important, and they understand the ramifications of not following procedures?
Yes, there is. There's an extensive, um, documentation that our secondary schools, the bookkeepers and secretaries, sign off, uh, actually in August at the training, and then with the video that's watched, there's a sheet that gets printed out, and there's tracking to see that they've watched this. But our secondary secretary, secretaries and bookkeepers, absolutely.
Is, is there any sense of, obviously, this happened multiple times at the elementary level, is there any sense, even with all of the training that we've had, why these things have happened? It's obviously not a huge risk factor, but is that, was there anything identified in the current training that we're doing, or procedures that we're doing, that the staff seem not to follow the procedures all the time?
The one, um, with the log was a little unusual, that, um, they were missing that. However, the log, all of the rest of the columns are filled out, the mitigating factors and that, the same information is recorded on a bank bag, and recorded in a general admittance form. Um, as far as the two counters, the money when it comes to the district, it's counted as well, goes through the bank, goes through receipting, so, there's other procedures in place. Um, exactly why that was missed, I can't answer that without speaking individually to those.
But it's, it's clear to them now that that's important?
Yes.
In the process? Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright. I think for us as a, as a board, some of us, we've been, been through this before, and we appreciate that there's been this process put in place, but, um, you know, under our fiduciary responsibilities, too, it's, it's really at that staff level and through the administration that does that. So, uh, again, making sure that the staff understand that this is very important to the board, um, that we have legal responsibilities as a board with the district finances, these are typically public funds, um, or funds from parents and, and the children, so, um, we take that very seriously, and so, anything that we can do to make sure that that message is made clear to the staff in the district, um, I think is important.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions for Josh on that? Alright, thank you so much, we appreciate the information, the time you've taken to, uh, go through that audit and explain it to us. Steve, I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, I've already done this once before here, so, without further ado.
They told me that you had a song or something, your last note? Okay.
Alright.
Well, thank you again, I'm Gary Becker, I'm Chair of the Committee. Uh, you, you've received our report, we've got a quick little PowerPoint here to share some highlights, and what we really wanna focus on with you tonight are just, uh, kinda the individual accomplishments for this year that are over and above our regular, uh, work that we do. Uh, so, uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. The, uh, the first thing is that we've had three new members join our comedic, committee, uh, one for last year, and then we've, we've had two to replace this year, so, we're looking forward to welcome those new members, uh, to our committee. And, uh, the other thing we did this year, uh, is that we expanded our number of meetings from six to eight. Uh, we are, we found our agendas getting very tight, and we're running short on time, and we all have agreed to, to do a couple extra meetings, so, uh, that was a, a nice addition this year, where we got, uh, a lot of our, a lot more time to discuss some important issues.
As Steve mentioned, I'm Matt Waltz, one of the outgoing members of the Audit Committee. Uh, one of the things we noticed when we did kind of our self-review of this, during the 16-17 committee year, was that there was an item in our, our chart in our matrix to, um, get updates on, on legal issues that may be of importance to the committee. So, two things we did this year was we invited the, um, district's legal counsel to two of our meetings during the year, so that they could be there and advise us of any things they felt noteworthy, and also then that the counsel provides us an annual letter of any important items that he felt the committee needed to be aware of.
I'd like just to highlight a couple, a couple in my area. Um, next slide, there we go. Um, the first one is on, we have what we call a, a local revenues report, and we get that every month before we Audit Committee meets, as soon as we get the month closed. And that just highlights significant differences, variances between budget and actual, and an explanation why. Lots of times, it's timing difference, it's there, some changes in how we're handling stuff, that we've never found anything that's been really anything serious, it's just, we just wanna highlight that, so the Audit Committee has a chance to look at it, and we have a can, a chance to converse with Sherry and Steve about that sort of thing. The next one was the internal control review. That was my hot button, when I came on this committee a year ago, 'cause I, I wanted to say, you know, it's been nine years since we had the issue, and I looked through the report from the auditors in RSM, and I wanted, had a nice conversation with Steve. I have to tell you, I appreciate Steve and his handling of that whole process. I mean, it was a, it's a tou, it was a tough deal for him, and I have a lot of respect for how he dealt with all that. So, I just said, hey, it's been nine years, why don't we just take a look at it, because partly, technology's changed. I mean, back when they put it, instituted a lot of that stuff, a lot of stuff was paper, and so, I said, you know, since we don't have an internal auditor on, auditor on staff, and it's been a while, so, I thought we oughta, uh, we oughta push and take a look at it, and especially since, you know, Steve's retiring, and it, and it just cleans it everything up for the new, for Dave coming in, so, and so, we were happy with the output. If, the only thing we found was a little bit of problems in the elementary schools, I mean, the amount of transactions you guys have in this joint is significant, and the fact, quite frankly, to find that that's the only thing we could really hang our hat on, that was pretty impressive. So, I mean, kudos to Steve and his staff for instigating, you know, what happened nine years ago, and the process of doing all that, so, that's, uh, I just say. I only been on this a year, I only got to know Steve a year, but I'm, I have a lot of respect for- but I have a lot of respect for how he's handled this whole process. So I just want to publicly say that. Thank you.
Just like to recognize Rich Patterson and Matt Walz for completing their three-year term and will be retiring from the committee. And this spring, I served on the interview panel that selected a new CFO. And so with that, I'd like to say thank you, Steve, for your service. Congratulations on your next chapter. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from the board?
John, I'll say a big thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I was a part of the original committee and I know after yearly reports that we've come a long way and feel that we are fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility. We couldn't do it without volunteers like yourself and taking the time. So thank you very much.
Did you have a, I'll count. Absolutely. I do want to thank you from all of us on the board too. So, and Matt, for all of your service and leaving the board and for Rich too, if we can share that with him. And I've known some of you for longer than others, but it does take, I mean, going from six to eight meetings and the amount of information that you get and the amount of transactions in this joint, it is pretty amazing. We see those reports, reports as well. And, you know, we do try and make things as transparent as possible in this district, whether it's Steve and his team getting everything up on the website, every single check that's written, all of that's out there. But really, all of your volunteer time, every one of you on that committee and helping add that credibility and transparency to what this public school district does. And I think public is the key. It's public funds that are helping educate our local kids, and we appreciate your commitment to that. So, thank you. All right. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to learning and leadership section. And I want to welcome Dr. Trace Pickering and Iowa Big Update. And I know you have some special guests with you tonight as well, Dr. Pickering.
I first want to just say thank you to Dr. Buck and the board for having us tonight. I'm Kyle Cusmore. I am a recent graduate from Jefferson High School, and I attended Iowa Big for the last two years. Kind of something that I framed what I wanted to talk about tonight was just kind of how was Big like helped prepare me for adulthood, the next chapter. So during my time at Big, I led two teams over the course of my two years. And my senior year, I led a project where we created a documentary film. And over the course of several years, I'd always wanted to make a film, but I'd always been told, no, you can't do that. That's not realistic. Part of like what Big did for me was they helped me realize this is possible. We got to make a film about a couple out in Chewyville and got to tell their life story through this film, and I just felt really fulfilled throughout the entire process. So kind of tying it back, Big helped me realize that career of mine that I'd always wanted to do, something that was far out dream, was possible.
I'm Olivia Christensen. I was at Big for this last year, and I'm a graduate from Wash High School, George Washington. I'm really going to basically say, like, answer the same question as him. How has Big kind of changed me and prepared me for adulthood? I don't really know. This is like crazy to me, I'm sorry. Okay. So it's really prepared me like for adulthood by giving me ownership of like my learning. It really like forced me to kind of take it upon myself to like go out and ask for help, more than just have it like sit in front of me and like tell me like this is how it's supposed to be. It's more just like, go figure out how it's supposed to be and then come back to me and ask me questions and allow me to help you further that, rather than like this is the goal that you need to get to. Also, it's really showed me some of my passions that I didn't know I had before, and now I've figured out that I'm really passionate about it. So yeah, that's just a few things. I could go on forever, but we have time.
My name is Kennedy Deco. I am a recent graduate from Kennedy High School, and I attended Iowa Big for three years. I'm going to kind of touch on the subject of how Iowa Big has changed my opinion on learning. So I went into Iowa Big as a sophomore, and the reason I joined Iowa Big was because my friend was doing it. So I was obviously a sophomore. But it's really helped me become an independent thinker. I started a project two years ago called the Iowa Youth Accelerator, which the goal of that project is to connect with the Cedar Rapids School District Middle Schools and to connect with the middle school girls there. And the entire project is just about empowering girls to become the next leaders of our community, basically. And I, through that, the past two years, I have done, I've done several events. We created a camp, we did a 12-week program, and we did two events to kind of top it all off. The final event was called Minot Tank, which is like a mini version of Shark Tank. And after my first year doing that in 2017, I really felt like nobody had to come up to me and pat me on the back. I felt like I had achieved something, but I didn't need an A to tell me that. So no matter how many people told me I did good job or came and pat me on the back, I knew for myself that I had redefined success and achievement. So Iowa Big has really, in the biggest way, helped me do that, has just basically redefined learning and what success and achievement is to me. So, yeah.
I asked these three recent grads to join me tonight to just share a little bit of their story. One young person once told a group of adults, you know, anytime adult talks about an education program, other adults say, where's, show me the data. When you put a student up front, they are the data. And so I wanted to share some of that. What I want to wrap up with tonight is to talk about some data. Big is five years old now, and we're starting to be at that point where we can look at some longitudinal data, and we have a lot more work to do. But I want to share one exciting study that happened this year. We worked with Mahai Chiksek Mahai, who wrote the book Flow years ago. He has colleagues up at the University of Northern Iowa. And essentially Flow looks at, that Flow is that state a person gets in when they are just totally consumed with something, time seems to disappear, and you're just laser focused and things come to you. It's like, so the study was around, are students who attend Big more often in Flow compared to in a traditional setting or when they're out of school? So the study was a nice, it was a nice opportunity for them to do the study because a lot of our students are half-time at a traditional high school and half-time at Big. So over the course of a three-week period, students were randomly texted, texted a quick little survey, where are you at, what are you doing, and then a few questions related to the Flow study. Go ahead, Mark. So when they brought the results back to me a few weeks back, they said, well, we're going to Budapest, Hungary in June to share this data with an international group of folks who are interested in this kind of work. And we're a little scared to share the data because it's so overwhelmingly positive. Like, well, what do you mean? I got my doctorate, but it was, stats was not probably my strength. They said, well, .05 confidence level in a study is 95% chance that those results were not random, that that, this actually is what's happening. A .01 is the gold standard at 99.9%. And the confidence interval that's almost never attained, .001, which means 99.9% into infinity. And that is the platinum standard. The study overwhelmingly had data in the platinum standard level. The students' experiences at Big in relationship to other parts of their life. These are the areas that students reported that they're, they're being in Flow and that was dramatically different at Big versus not at Big. I won't read all of these to you, but having the freedom to choose your activity, the goal is clear, I can concentrate, I'm enjoying this work, I'm feeling engaged, not bored, time's flying, I feel active, not passive, I feel like an insider, not an outsider, I feel happy, not sad, I'm putting lots of effort in, and I feel like I'm in control. We're all at that platinum .001 confidence interval, which is really impressive. At the gold standard, there are two other items. I feel skilled and I have the ability to do this. And then at the .05 confidence level, I'm feeling calm, not anxious, capable, not confused. And there were three other items that didn't meet the confidence intervals, but were all tilted towards the student's big experience. So one of the things that we've talked about from the very beginning is not only preparing kids academically, but all of these 21st century skills that we talk about in Flow encompasses a lot of those. And we're seeing, seeing our students finding out how to get themselves into states where they can really focus and get passionate and get after things. So a couple other areas, data-wise. Every year, we have students who take the ACT, who've taken it before their big experience and then take it after. And we've seen consistently, year after year, kids gaining three, four, sometimes five points, which is pretty hard to do. This year's highlight was a student who took it, took the ACT prior to Big and then took it again this year, and she took English at Big. And her English score went from a 25 to a 35 on the ACT, which is...
Almost impossible.
Almost impossible, yeah. We're scratching our head at that.
That's awesome.
Yeah. We had a student admitted to Dartmouth. Clearly, her home high school did a lot of work to help her get there. But on her acceptance letter and her scholarship letter, at the bottom in handwriting from the dean or the admissions officer was a note saying, your experience at that thing called Iowa Big differentiated you and got you, put you in a place where you could get the scholarship. So that was good to hear. And then we had another anecdotal story. A student went to a college, visited an Iowa private college, was offered a package, a financial package. Said, well, what else can you tell me? And she proceeded to talk about all the things she'd been doing through her big projects. And the admissions counselor pulled the scholarship back, said, I think we could do a little better, get you some more money. So, her parents like to hear that, of course. So just very briefly, some data to share with you about how our kids are doing. We're oversubscribed again. We'll have 250 kids in the program next year. We had 50 on the waiting list. We have amazing experiences. If you haven't seen Kyle's film, somewhere only we know, you got to find a way to get it. I can probably help you get that, get a copy of that. Olivia's working with the Ed Revision Team, a team of students dedicated to helping transform education and get kids involved in the experience. She will continue on that team, even though she's graduated. And Kennedy took over the success to the Power of She project from years and years ago and just made it better and better. It culminated it with this year called She Can. And she's actually going to take that project with her in her travels moving forward.
Olivia, what is the project, the program that you're working on that rediscovering or redeveloping education?
Oh gosh. So it's called Ed Revision. It's a group of students, obviously. And we're working with Education Reimagined to basically just spread the growth of learner-centered education, because we love it so much and we want everybody else to experience it also. Last year, we've really just met other communities around the world that we never knew existed, really further like made us feel like our work wasn't just for no reason. We're also planning to work with Grant Wood, AEA to be a part of PD Days for them, because we've tried it. We didn't get too much success in participation, but we're still going to fight for it. Then we also plan to do a conference. All are invited if you want. It'll be next year, at the beginning of the year, hopefully to gain some participation from students and involvement and further their like understanding of Iowa Big and learner-centered communities and what's that we're doing. We're trying also to kind of dip our toes into some of the like elementary schools and stuff that are also trying to develop and give them some of our kind of ideas and make it more learner-centered also. We do have like, I believe Nixon is interested in some of our help. Yeah. We want to further that education, so.
There's a piece of this that's not just promoting this to the rest of Iowa or the world, but really looking internally at Cedar Rapids Community School District?
Yeah. We, yeah, we really just want to be that, well, we're educated on it and we want other people to enjoy it. We've also been in it personally, and other people are showing interest but just don't know how to start it. So they're coming to some of our adults, and then they're referring them to us, and we're trying our best to be that help, so, yeah.
Questions or comments? Gary?
A couple of things. First, I really want to thank Dr. Pickering for starting Iowa Big. It's, it's been a really terrific program for our community. And what I see it as, a catalyst to show all of our high schools and all of our schools what is possible with looking at education in different ways. So thank you so much. Personally, Kyle, I'm glad that you didn't listen to those people that said you couldn't do that. I think, I think we heard somebody early on with our public comments talk about, we need to be able to, to change and to, and to have a little bit more resilience. So thank you. I would love to see your film. I'll talk to you maybe afterwards and see how we can connect on that. And to the young ladies, the young women, I thank you for sharing and telling your stories and your continued involvement in education. I lay a great deal of faith in our, in our future generations. What I've seen over the last couple of months, our younger generation is going to be able to accomplish some great things that we as adults have not been as successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just say one last thing unless there's other questions. So Dr. Buck and I, we have the pleasure of sitting on the Iowa Big Advisory Board, and I know others, Mary has sat on it when this first started, and it's exciting to see where this has gone, and there's lots of opportunities. I know they're having a discussion this week with the advisory group. But as students, thinking about where this can go, what, what is, what else is the potential of Iowa Big? And I think for us as school districts and all the excitement that we're hearing about this, making sure that we're doing all that we can as, as the adults. I mean, sometimes you guys have some pretty amazing insights that we never even think of, and sharing those with us and certainly through Dr. Pickering, but directly to us as well. And our emails are out there. Pick up the phone, I'll be glad to talk to you about that. But making sure that, you know, all students in our district, not just students that come from families where this sort of neat opportunity is encouraged, or, you know, your best friend when you were a sophomore just happened to push you. But how can we get more students involved with this and get them as passionate, as excited about their learning as what we see in you three? And so I think sometimes we adults, especially those of us sitting in some of these roles, need to hear those ideas more. So if you have those kinds of ideas, feel free outside of this sort of formal environment to let us know. And it might even be something at some point, as a board, we could maybe have some of you and come in and talk with us. Trace will maybe have a discussion during a work session or something in the next year. But I think we need to hear more and more of this, because this is where it's going. Whether you go into the traditional two-year or four-year college programs, or the trades programs, or the military, it's really about innovation, as Gary has said about that change and resiliency that we've heard. So anyway, thanks for all you're doing. Thanks, I'm glad you had a great experience so far in Iowa Big, and we'll love to see you in the next stages of your lives. And Dr. Pickering, thanks again to you and your team for all you've been doing to help make this happen. So, thank you. All right. With that, we are at the end of our time for tonight's meeting, and I'll just remind the... What happens when I don't have my glasses on? You can kick me, Dr. Buck.
It's all right.
All right. School Improvement Advisory Committee. So Noreen, usually you like jump up and down or something over there? There you go, all right. So, SIAK.
This is really an update, and it will be brief. As in April, at the April Board Meeting, we did an update on all of our future-ready learning work and the development of... we did an update on all of our future-ready learning work and the development of a profile of a graduate, which has been the work of PSYAC. So, our School Improvement Advisory Committee, there's a little bit of an echo on this. Is that better? Okay. So, out of the, what my mom always said, "Out of the mouths of babes," right? You're no longer babes, but out of the mouths of our graduates, it made me more confident. It helped me dream of what's possible. It created ownership for me. I discovered my passions. It redefined my learning, redefined what I see as success. It made me an independent thinker. That right there is the profile of our future graduates that we want for all children. So I know that maybe this isn't the time or place that we usually do this, but thank you for sharing your learning. So what Big has done is created a realm of dreaming and possibilities, of a continuum of options for all of our kids. But for that to happen, we have to have some clarity around where they begin within our system, which is usually in our school, our schools. And Big is part of that continuum now, but it's really an extension of what we call the motherships of the other high schools. And so we are pre-K through 12th system. That is one entity of our system, but our magnet programs are also helping us explore what the options are. But we want innovation in every classroom. You don't have to go to a program or a place to discover that. So what PSYAC has been able to do with a lot of input from community groups is create and define competencies that we want to deliver on for every learner to be future-ready. So the first slide here shows you where we left off in April. And so this is it. This is the profile of a graduate. But if you wouldn't mind fast-forwarding here, Mark, to the next slide, this is the unpacked piece that lets you know the five Cs that we're going to focus on, our creativity, citizenship, communication, collaboration, critical thinking and problem-solving. You all didn't know that's what we were gonna be talking about, but you touched on all of those competencies. And then there's some descriptors under each one of those, which would be things that we will be looking for, that are integrated parts of our learning experiences for students. So we are going to spend the next iteration of curriculum development, instruction and assessment, defining where we see this in our entire system, not just at the end of the journey, at the 12th grade level, but through the pre-K through 12th grade levels. So with the, we have rubrics for four of these Cs. The only C that doesn't have a profile or rubrics at this point in time is citizenship. So we'll be working on that particular competency so that every single grade level span has rubrics, so that our teachers can see, what does this look like? And I think, and I showed you a sample in April, but I think for all of our teachers, when they see what the rubrics look like, they're doing much of this already. But also, how do we gain ownership on it and how do we report on it and how do we deliver this to the rest of our community? So we are very excited. This was a key part of our strategic plan and this will be what's in front of everyone. You were the first audience to see this up close and in-person. And then tomorrow we'll be unveiling it to our executive council and then we'll be working with some of our curriculum groups this summer and then, of course, launched in August for all of our teachers in our community. So, very excited about PSYAC's work. They put in a tremendous amount of effort, energy and input around this and we're just really excited that we now have a defined profile of a graduate for Cedar Rapids Community School District. So that's it. That's PSYAC. Questions for me? Yeah. Yes! Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, really excited about it.
John?
Gary?
You've touched, you and Dr. Pickering both about data and measuring success. And I just have to make the comment, I was gonna try to avoid it, but I wish as a state we could also look at some of these rubrics and look at what success is. I just sat through an ISAB exec board meeting where we heard from Iowa Testing and their aggressive plan, the tasks that they have before them to have a test out there next spring for all of the schools. And again, it's just one small part, but yet it's gonna probably play such an important analytical part of what we look at as success. And yet I look at the students, I look at the scores, we see, we talk about it, yes, we have room to grow, but my gosh, we're doing such a good job in so many ways. And we're looking at, thanks to your work and the PSYAC, I mean, you're laying out the direction for us to go in the future. So these are the things that I've been looking for, other than just a raw test score, what are the measurements that are really gonna show, 21st century learning and 21st century students. So thank you for your work.
Absolutely. And I think you do highlight, notice the purpose and the purpose statement of the profile. We didn't eliminate content mastery. That is, we do want students to have content mastery. We realize that achievement assessments, many assessments will measure that, but what the community says is that we want that, but and this is what we really want to see pronounced. These are the skills that we need in our workers and in our future leaders and we want to see that they can do these things. So the fact that they're more pronounced is not a mistake in that, but we know that content mastery, we want our kids to learn at high levels and they have to be able to deliver on that. I love the story of the ACT score, but how, maybe it's hard to pinpoint of the change in that ACT score, but I have a feeling it was high levels of expectation of application as an English teacher, application of reading and writing and communication with real experiences that were highly relevant for that student.
Changing our reporting frameworks is part of our strategic plan. So you saw it in reporting on a variety of pathways and the ways in which kids are making progress in a number of different ways. And this reporting framework will help drive that conversation too, that we have these identified pieces of the profile and that we're driving reporting mechanisms towards them. And I think, you know, leading in this work, others as they, this will gain, I believe this will gain momentum around the state to help better give feedback on the really amazing work that's happening in schools in addition to the content mastery that's happening. So, yeah, I think it's really a fair point, Gary.
I think Dr. Pickering sort of touched on it too and I see it from my work at the university in admissions and enrollment management, that more and more universities and colleges across the country are looking at the holistic review of students. And, you know, for most of us, it's always the ACT or the SAT's always been a pretty small part of a decision, but it's becoming, in many cases, less and less as we look at these sorts of things that are important for our students when they graduate. And this is not only what colleges and universities are hearing about, but obviously K-12. So if they go into the workforce, when we talk to our friends, you know, in the trades associations, it's these sorts of things as well that they're asking for. The military, this is what they're asking for. It's not, can you do calculus? Calculus isn't even on the ACT exam, for goodness sakes. So can you think critically? Can you, you know, are you a good problem solver? Can you communicate? Can you work in groups and things? So those things are out there. And so I think we're definitely on the right track and I think from what I've seen, this is definitely a leadership role for us. You know, again, kind of being that lighthouse district, we've always been willing to take some of those chances and put our best foot forward and this is definitely out there. So I hope we can take this and help push others through all the good work that you guys have done. And at some point, I think, at least for myself, I would love to see some of the rubrics and see where we're digging down and where is it in the classrooms? What is it we're looking at, elementary, middle, high school? At some point, I mean, we don't have to obviously do it right away, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
It'd be interesting to see that, so. Other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Noreen, and apologies for my bad eyesight tonight.
It's all right. It's all good.
I just didn't bring my glasses.
We delivered. Thanks so much.
You did.
Much appreciated.
All right. So now, is that the, okay. Now we're ready to adjourn. And the board's all excited about this. So just a reminder that we do have our evaluations and do take time, be very specific. Laurel, they, our board secretary, does an awesome job of keeping track of all of your ideas and suggestions and we try and do our best to bring those ideas to the forefront, either through direct answers at board meetings or presentations. But if board members don't hear a response to their answers on these, just a reminder to feel free in a week or two to reach back out to Laurel and follow up. And I know that they're always trying to get follow-up done on all of these things. So with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.